Call to order the January 5th, 2021, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by remote participation. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or may tune in online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, nor members of the board nor applicants. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we're unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post in the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, a transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible. If any member of the public would like to participate in any public hearing, please email your question or comment prior to or during the hearing to our Planning Director Jean Enright. Her email is j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, we'll start with bond release 500 Grape Pond Road.
Okay, so this is associated with a $4,000 bond was posted as part of a condition of a January 7, 2020 watershed special permit allowing for the construction of an 1,814 square foot addition to an existing clubhouse and 164 square foot addition to an existing patio. An engineer letter certifying that the site was constructed in substantial conformance with the plan and an ASB plan is included in your packet. This project was also reviewed by the Conservation Commission. And on their next agenda, there'll be a request for a certificate of compliance to close out the project with CONCOM as well.
Okay.
Is Bill was here from the country club. If anybody does have any questions, I've included the decision in the packet as well.
Okay, any members of the board have any questions or comments?
This is Aaron. I just remember this came back to us because an underground tank was found. So I'm just curious how that went and whether we have verification that that was removed satisfactorily and that everything went okay with that.
Yes, we do. It was all as part of the monitoring that was conducted on the site and the communication between the Building Commissioner, CONCOM, and myself. We have all kinds of written communication that was mediated and removed.
Good, good question. Thank you, Aaron. Anyone else? Okay, we get a motion to release remaining bond funds for 500 Grape Pond Road posted as a condition of the January 7, 2020 watershed special permit.
So moved.
Motion made by John Simons.
This is Aaron, all second.
Seconded by Aaron Preston. All in favor, our favorite roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Kate?
Yes.
All right, motion to release bond funds is approved.
For Jeff, for your benefit, we'll turn that into the Treasurer's Office within a day or two. We're still somewhat remote environment. And we have two check runs a month, so it may take two to three weeks, but we will process it starting this week.
I appreciate that. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, 187 Turnpike Street. Lyndon Albadian, discussion regarding potential zoning amendment for the parcel.
All right, so I've provided several documents in your packet. I guess this would be initial review for a resident that is looking to potentially rezone her property for the May annual town meeting. This will just tonight, kind of looking for a sense of the board, so I will kind of provide an overview of what's in your packet. There's an aerial of the property itself. It, 187 Turnpike is approximately directly across from the front door of Burger King Restaurant. There are three homes that front on Turnpike Street. This is the middle home. There's one that fronts kind of the corner of Peters and 114, but there's three residences. And this is approximately the middle of that. So in your packet, there's that aerial view. There's a Excel spreadsheet that lists the 17 B4 parcels in town. All of the B4 parcels span Route 114, so they start with undeveloped lots that kind of surround the market basket. And they're owned by Market Basket, so they provide somewhat of a buffer to the residential areas. And they continue up Turnpike Street to include the Tribune Lot, which is a fairly large sized lot. There's a church that fronts on Peter Street that is a B4, and then there's several smaller lots that surround the intersection of 125 and 114, this being one of them. And so I've provided a key to go along with the Excel spreadsheet, and I number the parcels on that key. So if you were to scroll down the colored mapping, you can follow along that the lots that I referenced around Market Basket of lots 1 and 2, the Eagle Tribune and the church are lots 3 and 4. And then around this intersection, a lot's 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. Lot 10 is the office buildings across from Merrimack College, across from Bertucci, so the two large pretty much medical buildings are before. And then it rounds the corner onto Elm Street for lots 11, 12, and 13. 11, 12, and 13 all look like single family residence as well. Merrimack College owns one of them. One of them is a doctor's office and one of them is RE/MAX occupies. Whether there's residential above, I'm not certain, but RE/MAX has a sign on the side of that building. Then if you continue up Route 114, Chestnut Green, which is again a series of condos that are essentially medical offices, and 100 bypass, which has an MRI building in it. It's a brick building facing the bypass on the backside of Chestnut Green. You continue further out Turnpike Street, lots 16, little parcel 16 and 17 on this key. 16 is Merrimack Condos, which is Compass Point Road. It's a 40B development that has 52 units, I believe, in it. So they're condos, even though it's a business B4 lot. And then adjacent to that is some office buildings. They're set back from Turnpike Street. They're hard to see from the road, actually, but there's a there's a street sign that itemizes several offices that are located in a B4 parcel on 114. So the spreadsheet details B4, whether it's vacant or you, or what type of uses there, the parcel size, the frontage amount, the depth, and the owner of the parcel. The smallest parcels are certainly centered around this intersection of 114 and 125 and the Merrimack College-Bertucci intersection of 114 and Elm Street. Also included in the packet are the dimensional tables where you can see the relation of mentions associated with B4 as well as other business districts and uses that are allowed again in B4 as well as other districts. And I think just within the last couple of days, I asked, so the options typically are the applicant have expressed that they're trying to sell the home. They've been trying to sell the home for at least a year now. I think over a year. The primary inquiry is about some type of business use, mostly personal service type use. It's the activity they're getting. Very little activity in terms of reusing this as a residential unit. That being said, personal services are not allowed in B4 today. I've asked that they provide a sketch of what they're really looking to do, and so there is a sketch that has been added to your pocket packet that shows under a U-turn around in front of the existing building, the existing building remaining as is, and five parking splits to the rear of the lot. And so typically, the option is to either allow the, allow more uses within the zone or to look at the B4 district holistically and talk about whether B4 is the appropriate zone for this area in general. And this is really preliminary, and it's a lot to think about, but I just kind of wanted to throw out historically how this has been approached. So the applicants are here. If you'd like to get a sense from them as to what they've been experiencing in terms of trying to market this house, and then kind of let you digest this and ask any questions you may have.
What's the, I don't see a sketch in the I had the same problem.
Hold on one second.
The sketch was included in an email Jean sent earlier today.
Okay, I will add it to the packet, and I will make sure that it'll be available to the public. We'll call it out. Thank you. As soon as I add it, it'll be available.
Can we hear a little bit about the size and dimensions of the property, the house, bedrooms, floor area, all that kind of stuff?
Do you want that from the applicant? I turned on myself.
Yes, please. Like, I guess it doesn't really matter, but I would say more from the applicant.
You want me to hop in? So my name's Wendy McGuire. I'm working with Linda Nalbandi and the seller. Both as the Realtor, trying to help her to sell the property, but also as a friend. I went to school with Linda's brother and have lived in North Andover for many years. So been trying to help her sell this more as a commercial property. The house, it's in the sketch as well. The existing building itself is 20, 26 feet wide, 19 feet deep. It's got an extension on the back, a small room addition of 16 by 10, and then it's got a like a three season porch off to the, if you're looking at the road on the right-hand side of 8 by 11. It's also got a garage that's currently right where the driveway is currently towards the back of the building. And in the proposed drawing that we sent out, that garage would be demolished, and then it would allow for a turnaround around the back of the house. We kind of took a look at Jean when you mentioned what Andover Pest Control had just done up the road on 114, took a look at that. And that's like very similar to that pavement as far as putting parking spaces in there as well. We have been, we have been trying for over a year to sell it. We did have it under agreement with somebody who was going, wanted to put an office building in the back and then use the parking, more parking up front. There is what's wetlands that have been a part of the property, right on the edge of the property. So that became an issue that the buyer backed away because he was not able to put in what he was looking to put in as far as a business. But Linda and her family have lived there for about 50 years before there were any wetlands there. And right now, she's just trying to sell the property, not to, you know, sell it for a million dollars, but basically to sell it to get out from underneath it. It was given to her after her mother passed. And so now it's, you know, it's a house that she's having a difficult time to try and keep up with. So it's more just looking to see what we can do to sell it. So we have had a lot of interest from buyers who have come in. When Bliss Spa knew that they had to move, they actually approached Linda probably about, I don't know, six, seven, eight months ago, a year ago. And because it was zoned with no personal, it was the B4, they knew they couldn't put what they wanted to do in there. But we have had interest from people putting in either spa type of service or like nails or hair salon. And when those, when they can't, you know, they can't do it because of the way it's zoned currently. So we've still been trying to sell it, and we talked a little, a little bit about how do we, how are we able to get somebody in there that can buy the property and use it for the purpose, commercial purpose? You know, that whole street has become commercial over the years. There's very few residents left. You know, residential homes left on the street, but so we're trying to figure out what we can do. And then we talked about, well, is there a way to change the zoning that would allow somebody, if they visited the property again and were interested, they would be able to put in what they wanted to put in there. And in a lot of the business.
When you can ask you a question, this is Aton. When, when commercial, potential commercial buyers come in, do they want to generally buy it and put their business in as is, or do they want to tear down the building and build a new building?
So the first person that we were under contract with wanted to tear it down and put in a new building in the back of the lot. So if you recall, the how, the business that's around the corner on Peters Street, two doors down, not the one that still says Work Haven Hospice, but the building next to it, used to be a house that was very close to the street. They knocked that down. They put the business in the very back and then the parking in the front. We had someone who wanted to do something very similar and kind of almost a butt that, be very close to that lot line in the back. But because of the wetlands and being 50 feet away, the way this lot is set up, it's 110 feet across the front of the lot, and then it goes down to 86 feet in the back. So to have that 50-foot, you know, protection zone from the wetland didn't allow them to do, put in a building. So that was, that was the issue. So the people to, after that, the people that have come in after that have wanted to rehab the current building, the current structure and make that into their business.
Okay.
Which is why we presented the plan with the buildings intact, the way that, you know, basically the way they are.
And Aton, they have communicated that they have talked to the owner of the property, both to the right and left of this parcel. It's the same owner of the building on the corner of Peters and 114, as well as to the left side. And he is reluctant to sell. And so I talked about, would there be opportunity, would somebody want to buy all three and kind of combine and do a development? But at this point, he's communicated, he is not willing to sell, especially the one in the corner of 114 and 133.
Yeah.
And he doesn't want to buy the one in the middle and have all three. It's a monopoly.
He does. He actually, he does. He has offered to buy the, my house.
But for the right price.
Just throughout the years, you know, right now, no, but he has made offers.
Yeah. And so, you know, interestingly that you bring that up, Aton, because we actually had a commercial real estate broker from Connecticut approach both of us, both Linda and Bill on both sides to offer all three. And they wanted to put in a major retail property in there, and they were talking with the town about it and doing some preliminary planning and questions, but they could not get that corner lot, which is really the key to putting anything in there for one person to put a development in there, a major commercial development.
Okay, so why don't we, as a board, why don't we talk about how we feel about what are, instead of going to actual, the actual zoning, zoning, but what are appropriate uses for this area? And I think that can kind of help us in discussing this one particular property, but also how we might go about making changes if, if changes are appropriate. From my perspective, it does seem like this area has become a lot more commercial than residential. I liked you and Jean when, when you were kind of talking about options. If we were to go the option of some sort of rezoning, I like the idea of simply adding uses rather than necessarily rezoning everything, but maybe adding uses with special permits. If there's any way to encourage mixed use, I think that would be nice. But I think if we were to look to rezone this property, that we should afford the same opportunities to the neighboring properties and similar properties. So if we were to add some sort of special permit for personal service or something like that, that it should not just be for this one, but it would be for any similarly situated properties that they could also take advantage of that. Those are just kind of my initial thoughts. So why don't we just go down the line and get people's thoughts? John?
Yeah, Aton, I think your, your thought process is well taken. I mean, this is, you know, this stretch of 114. We, you know, really all the way out to maybe stop and shop where we, we've struggled with it over the last really 20 years. And I think it's, it's worth looking into it again. We've tried a number of different approaches, you know, down a little bit further down. We've tried the approach of the CDD districts and the ability to put businesses in existing houses. And maybe that model works here, but I think your additional twist of maybe personal services type activities in existing buildings is the thing to get us through it. I definitely would prefer to deal with it more broadly than a specific parcel, even though I'm understanding of the, the issues and dilemmas of, you know, the people that live there. But, you know, we definitely, I think it's something we should take on and carefully look at.
Great, thanks, John. Aaron?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I guess first of all, the way I understand this from what Jean had presented and then the property owner's Realtor, it sounds like really the, the sticking point here is this personal service use. It, it, nothing, dimensionally at this moment seems to be of concern. And it seems like dimensional issues could, could be worked out by the ZBA if necessary, if, if, if this, whatever, if this property is sold. So I'm just looking at this as the, really the property or the personal services use that's at issue. And I, you know, looking at Jean's Excel spreadsheet here and the, the maps that she provided in the, in the materials and then reading what is constituted as personal services in the bylaw. Just adding that into the B4 doesn't seem to be terribly noxious. It seems like it would just adding personal services as a use would, would not upset any other property, given that it seems pretty much that all these, the B4s primarily concentrated on Turnpike Street. So, so I guess that's my take is that I think we should just add that use and then dimensional issues could be, you know, I think that's more of a question for ZBA.
Are you thinking by right or by site plan review or by special permit?
Um, I, I would say by right. I, like I said, I don't see any, in any of these locations how, you know, going to the, you know, our bylaw, you know, personal service establishment is an establishment providing personal services to the public such as shoe repair, barbering, dry cleaning, et cetera. I don't see any of those at these locations that are within this B4 zone is is terribly noxious to any butters.
Yeah. Can I just interject, Aton, on that? So a change of use, it may be as a right, the, the use itself, but it likely could trigger site plan review if it's going to have a traffic flow change or triggers five or more parking spaces. There's all kinds of things that could trigger site plan review, and I, and I would suspect even this one change into personal service would likely trigger it.
So I agree with that. And I, I mean, I agree with Aaron to the extent that, you know, barber shop not particularly bothersome, but if there would be changes of traffic and parking, and if that's right next door to a residence, I think it needs to be looked at. It should come before the board in some manner.
Yeah. And I guess one other thing I wanted to add to provide a little bit of context here, and this is something I think we have to be careful about. Is the new building that's around the corner, you know, that I think we alluded to the commercial building. I'm not sure if any of you were on the board when we did it, but in hindsight, it was the one example of site plan review that we've done that we actually considered denying it because the side of the building was too big compared to the lot, to the point where it almost was unusable. I think you got to be careful when you look at this. Again, I, I, I was sort of taking care of the kids when we talked about the size of the lot, but I had no idea how big the lot is, how wide the lot is. But I think you, for something like this, you got to be careful about whether you want to provide full flexibility to tear the building down and construct something bigger because you could end up with a problem like we did on that other lot.
So tearing the building down in South Andover will bring in a lot of zoning complexity. So this lot is nowhere near compliant with zoning, but minimum lot area and zoning is 10,000 square feet in B4. General business is 25,000 square feet, so it's
How big is the lot?
It's 15,000.
And the lot you're referring to, John, is approximately 13.
We can't zone it B4 and make it non-conforming. I mean, we just, it doesn't make
It's already B4. It is a B4. It's already a B4. All, all these lots are B4 somehow.
Okay, okay, but it, again, I think we want to, we want to structure whatever we end up with to something that will work for the location, because remember, this is one of the busiest intersections in town, and it's going to get a lot worse based on what's going to happen down the street.
I agree. So to bring the zoning in, to put in perspective, the frontage is 110, the minimum frontage in B4 is 200. So John, the setback on Turnpike Street for our business is 100 feet in our by lot. This is all pre-existing non-conforming, like all around these two intersections. So I think the lot you're referring to, in addition to it being a fairly large sized building on a 13,000 square foot lot, so almost 2,000 square feet less, they initially wanted to do a daycare, and that became really problematic of the amount of trips and things. So they ultimately didn't do a daycare. There was like a chiropractor in a real estate office for some time, and I think that's still what exists. So and that traffic wise, it seems to be working well. But, but I would just say for, as far as zoning goes, there's, there's all kinds of non-performing situation today.
Yep, okay.
Peter?
Yeah, thanks, Aton. Well, I, I agree with your original comments and John's earlier comments about, you know, how we've tried to deal with this particular segment of 114, and it, and you know, one of the things it brings to my mind is, you know, it'd be good to have something that's consistent with, to the extent our master plan comments on this. Because I'm just, I'm just thinking that I know there's a question here about sort of near term, but is there some way to address that, that it also fits with the longer term goals? Thank you.
Okay.
So Aton, I can speak to that a little bit if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I reviewed the master plan today, and I will say there's no specific goal that would, I think, really encompass what is trying to be achieved here in terms of changing, allowing a use that doesn't exist. And so the three goals that I pulled out that somewhat reference Route 114. The first, it's a strategy, the very first strategy is catalytic parcels. So focus new development and zoning changes along key corridors, which this would be, that may be more appropriate for higher density, mixed use development at key nodes or intersections. And so I would say that's more Amazon, that's more Roacrest type objective, not a 13,000 or 15,000 square foot lot on 114. The second one I pulled out is a series of area plans for key commercial and mixed use nodes to establish desired visions and outcomes for each location and craft zoning to implement those desired outcomes. And so I'm not sure if I communicated to the board or not yet, but we applied through mass development for funding for an area plan, and we received $50,000 in funding to do an area plan for Route 125 from the China Blossom intersection to the Haverline. And our justification and our application for that was the catalytic parcel of 1600 Osborne Street, the redevelopment that's going to occur and how that will affect the entire corridor itself. And so that's an area plan that is currently underway. And again, I don't think this parcel would spur an area plan by any means, but the intent of area plans are to look at a corridor in total. And then the last one was an update to town zoning bylaw to promote a mix of uses already served by public infrastructure such as Route 114, 125, and Sutton Street. And so there is some public transportation that certainly makes the loop around the Burger King intersection to Market Basket, back to Lawrence and whatnot. So there is some public infrastructure in the area, transportation wise. So I would say that this doesn't, no one would point to this lot to serve any of those, but in general, Route 114, 125 are certainly key corridors called out in the master plan.
Okay.
Nothing really new to add. I liked what Aaron said about just amending the use. I don't know how we, how we get there, but adding I don't know how we how we get there, but adding personal service to this doesn't seem to be too burdensome. I just don't know. What the process is where it would come back to us.
Great. Uh, and Kelly?
So I agree with what everyone else um has said before. Just one question, just to try to help understand it a little bit. Do we know why personal services wasn't included? In before as a use before? I'm just trying to see, trying to understand the downside. Or or why we wouldn't want it. Is there any history as why it wasn't included? Before previously?
I I don't know of any other than it's typically, I. Somebody can correct me, but I I liken it to a very frequent trip in and out. Um, so there's some turnover aspect to it.
It's a good question. Uh, I mean, I think I think the most important part is what is the. Character of the area now and what do we see as the um area going forward? And it seems like. These smaller businesses may be mixed with residential. Is where it's headed and and so I, Jean, I would say. Based on the board's um feedback, really kind of what Aaron was suggesting of seeing about a way to add. Personal use to before. We should look at the definition to see if there's any personal uses we would want to exclude. To see if there are any dimensional requirements or limitations that we would want to put in other than what's already in before. Knowing that most of the building is already non-conforming anyway. And then. Put in some placeholders and think about what kind of um. What kind of oversight there would be. I'm not particularly comfortable with the idea of just having it be. By right, even if there are other triggering uh things that would, I I think site plan review would probably be a better. Place, but let's put some placeholders in there while we kind of draft language that we can talk about, whether it's by writer or. Site plan review or 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 a full special permit. And maybe it could vary depending on. You know, how many different kind of thresholds you pick, you know, do you trip, do you trip parking, do you trip traffic, you know, those kind of things, just. I guess I'd leave it to to you to kind of. How we start that?
Okay.
So, okay, so why don't we um, I don't know, do you want to put this over? For, well, I think we should. At some point, take it up again in the next, I don't know, month, uh but it should probably be as like a B four rezoning. Rather than just one eighty-seven Turnpike Street as the discussion item. Okay, now obviously, the people from one eighty-seven are more than welcome to come and discuss as it's going to, you know, it would potentially, it would certainly affect their property. But I think since we're taking a broader view, the the agenda item should be a little bit broader. And so why don't we come back maybe in a month or so and and see where we're at?
Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you very much for bringing this to us and we'll we'll see what we can do.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to Royal Crest Estates, one and twenty-eight Royal Crest Drive, Trinity Financial. Am I too early for them?
Nope, so um my staff report indicated they are not attending tonight. They submitted. They submitted some information um and they submitted. My staff report said a letter would be coming regarding their, an update to the status of their outreach plan. So in your packet is that letter. Provides what they've done today, what they plan on doing in the near future. It also provides an update to the traffic impact peer review response, which they anticipate. Will they'll have their response to our peer reviewer well in advance of the January nineteenth meeting. So I've asked the peer reviewer to be available. On January nineteenth to um respond to their response. They've also updated on the fiscal impact study that they intended to get a draft to us this week. And hopefully to the board on February second. So I know the town manager would like our peer reviewer to take a look at that. Once submitted prior to presenting it to the planning board. And so. I know that we've talked for the last few meetings that you can anticipate the fiscal impact in the near future. So I I think February second is a real date for that. I carried in the packet the items that were included in the last meeting, the December fifteenth meeting that weren't necessarily. Spoken to or addressed in any manner. So there were property pictures um from the property line presented and there was a. Update to the profile summary, which included the Meramec College students, the forty B. Existing units today, which are none versus what's proposed, which were all requested by the board. I anticipate at the next meeting, we will have another update to that profile that will include the change in trips. So if you remember correctly, Jeffrey Dirk, our peer reviewer, indicated that the trip count will go from approximately thirty-five hundred to roughly fifteen. Thousand, so an increase of twelve thousand trips. And um so I think Peter asked for that to be included on this spreadsheet as well. And rather than to do it for this meeting, they opted to do it on the nineteenth when they're, when they can review those numbers and and respond to those numbers. And then lastly, there's two, I'm sorry, there's Mastio T comments, and I don't know if you prefer that I continue to include these in the packet, but. This is John McGary who owns the commercial property adjacent to the existing Royal Crest. And he's got concerns with the Route one fourteen improvement projects proposal that shifts this main intersection kind of closer to his property. Um, and so to date, I've included some of his comments to Mastio T, Mastio T's response. He has further responded to Mastio T. And I've included that in the packet. So it's related, I think it's related, I think you should be aware of it. So my preference would be to just keep you informed by including his comments. Um, and then over the weekend, two butter comments were received and have been included in the packet. They are from a resident on Berkeley Road, Lynn Jacobek. She had initial comments, I responded to her and provided her a lot of information and she responded again with one more comment that I've included tonight. So Aitong, I'm not sure if you want to read them into the record tonight, or I can carry them to the to the nineteen.
No, we can, we can carry them. I know the um. The woman who submitted the comments uh was concerned about notice. And just to be clear, these are discussion items that we're having right now. So there is no. Notice, official notice requirements. Uh, at some point, if it ever comes to a place where this. Becomes a proposed warrant article, we will have actual public hearings. But it hasn't reached that stage where notice is legally uh required yet. We're kind of walking through it to see if it gets there.
So Aitong, this is Peter, just a comment on that.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you that these butter comments do um. Comment on uh notice and I agree with what you've said. However, I think there's also uh. An important comment in here in terms of uh transparency and sort of. Accuracy forthcoming of the information. Um, and I think that is important and and timely. Uh, it's something the board has commented on a number of times and we now have an in butter comment. Essentially saying the same. So I I think it is important to get this uh read into the record.
Uh, okay, yeah, I I just want to do that when the um applicants are here to respond to any. Comments. So why don't we hold it for the next one? We'll read it in and then if they have any response. I don't know if there'll be any interaction between those parties or they they're going to give us a uh some more updates on community outreach. So I think it would be. Appropriate certainly to read it. Um, but I'd like it to be when um there can be a response.
And so I have provided both comments to the applicant and advised them that my recommendation to the board would be to carry them to the next meeting, should you have any comments. Related to those two comments, so.
Okay, so let's keep them, keep them on as part of everything and we'll read them into it. Uh, and we can put that as, do you want to put that as the, you know. Community outreach transparency, just as a bullet point to talk about on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Uh, is the working group still meeting?
We are, we are scheduled for Thursday morning. And I think we're going to really focus on some of the draft zoning. We're making some headway on that. We have placeholders in terms of parking requirements and dimensional requirements until we get a little further into this process and get a better sense of. What the board is thinking and what the traffic report and fiscal import, fiscal impact analysis kind of points to in terms of. Density. So, but we are making headway and we are scheduled for Thursday morning.
Okay, um, is there anything in particular that members? Uh, I I have one thing that I want people to think about and maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting. Um, and then I'd like to hear if anybody else has anything in particular that they'd like to either discuss now or discuss at an upcoming meeting. One of the things I'm struggling with is. Is if we move ahead with a warrant article on this proposal, how do we evaluate? Some of the numbers that are being thrown around. Uh, for instance, traffic, right? We got some good information from the traffic report. I thought our peer reviewer was excellent in terms of making comments about that. But how do we address what? They say, right? So if they say the traffic is going to get X amount worse or Y amount worse or. The intersections may go from a C to a D, but then if the. One fourteen project comes in and there's mitigation, goes back to a C, how do we address? What's appropriate and what's not appropriate? It seems very difficult to me to say, okay, going from a C to an F is not appropriate. But a C to a D is appropriate. Uh, and the same with the number of people or beds and um units. How do we really, other than just gut feel, say sixteen hundred is appropriate versus fourteen hundred versus twelve hundred versus a thousand? Et cetera. I mean, we'll look at the fiscal impact, we'll look at the impact on schools and all of that. I'm just struggling with how to take these objective numbers. And make a solid decision based on those. So just just something to think about or talk about if people want, that's just one thing that I'm personally. Struggling with as we go through this.
Well, I mean, uh, Aitong, I think. That what you're really getting at is how much density? And massing are we willing to tolerate? Uh, all of the external impacts of from the development and it obviously traffic is a very considerable one. We still haven't even looked at the financial impact and the impact on our uh services. Uh, the the massing of buildings as regard. Residential neighborhoods close to there and in the town in general. So it it's some level, it's. It's qualitative. I mean, you know, it's it's like, I don't know if it's six feet hundred, what would twelve hundred be or something like that? I I don't know exactly the answer to it. I mean, obviously. You know, it was sort of the reason why I've always asked, well, what are similar, what are comparables, what are, you know, when towns similar to us? The most density that they've allowed. And because, you know, we know, for example. And this goes way back to when originally the Osgood uh landing site was going to be a forty R. Well. That situation's completely different. You could put a lot of density there and you're not going to impact really too much. Uh, i- i- in the way of neighbors or anything like that, whereas this is right in the middle of extremely. Pretty well populated and and pretty dense traffic. So it's it's, you know, it's a different set of circumstances here. So.
And I I don't only want to focus on the negatives too. I mean, when we look at the numbers that Jean put together for affordable housing. I mean, this would in one fell swoop get us up and over ten percent. That's a pretty big deal. Uh, at the numbers we're talking about right now. Um, you know, putting it in, putting a project like this on a. Large parcel of many acres, somewhat spreading it out. Again, a a good thing all in all. Seems like we, you know, I have been someone who has been. Really trying to push for more affordable housing, more different housing choices. So there are a lot of um potential. Real benefits. I assume the fiscal impact will be positive. We'll we'll have to wait and see. Weighing those potential benefits with, I guess, more for the traffic, right? How much are we willing, or traffic would get worse, whatever project we we allow, traffic would get worse. How much are we willing to tolerate and how do we decide that? So, uh, anyone else have any just kind of thoughts they want to share?
I think kind of along those similar lines, it's just with the multiple projects on the same area, you know, including the one fourteen project. Making sure. That, you know, as I'm thinking about these, making sure I kind of understand what good and bad impacts of all of them together and kind of what what's the order of. Of these things as they come down the pike, right? Because it's not just one thing, it's multiple projects going on, good and bad and, you know, and and there are pros and cons in this area. So just being able to understand all of those in in big, in a big picture.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, all right, so why don't we, that's if we'll continue that one discussion until the nineteenth of January. Okay, Three Grape Pond Road, Elaine Finnberry has requested a continuance until January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. That is a public hearing that we have opened um and will continue until January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. So can we get a motion to continue the public hearing for Three Grape Pond Road until January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one?
Aitong, actually, two meetings ago, you motioned to continue to the nineteenth and that.
Oh, it's already done, okay.
Yeah, that timestamp motion is in your packet, so.
Oh, fantastic. All right, so great. So we, we're easy to, we're ahead of the game. Fantastic, okay. Four nineteen and four thirty-five Andover Street, Crosspoint Associates.
Okay, so um. The final traffic civil and stormwater period you comments have been received. All department review comments have been addressed. The stormwater peer reviews with just a few conditions that are fairly typical. The traffic and civil review comments defer some responses back to the board specifically comment number seven, nine, eleven. Twelve, thirteen and fourteen. Some of those are related. Um, and it seems like a lot, but they were, there were many more comments than that that have all been resolved. So each of which I would um may require relief from the board. In the traffic design guidelines. They allow the board a certain discretion and the ability to modify design standards. And so each of these is somewhat related to that. The applicant has provided responses to these final comments. However, I recommend the board review each of these. And lastly, John Simons had requested addresses for similar architecture to what was proposed for the buildings. Commenting that what was presented at the last meeting was not typical New England architecture. So comparison images and addresses have been included in the packet. The, I, I know this is somewhat premature, but given the time of the year and the holidays and whatnot, I did draft this decision somewhat early. Holding placeholders for the final traffic review and the extra comments. Um, that draft decision was included in your packet. I don't expect you to close the hearing and I've communicated this to the applicants, like it would. I I anticipate you'll close the hearing at the next meeting likely, but not tonight and not render a decision. However, in the applicant review of the decision, there's two conditions they'd like to discuss with the board and provide comments to the board. So those are in your packet. I've I've redlined their comments in that decision if you can't add the comments.
So why don't we do their their comments first? Then Jean, why don't you walk us through those um portions of the. Peer review traffic that they think the board should address and then we'll do the architecture after that.
Okay, so in your packet, there's a document. Titled twenty-one oh one oh five draft decision four nineteen and four thirty-five Andover Street. For the public reference, that draft decision includes comments in the right hand margin. So the first comment is. We made it to condition number thirty-six. I'll have Mark Johnson, I suspect, will speak to this.
Um, yeah, good evening. Um, with with me tonight, has been with me for the last couple of meetings, um is Jonathan Hoover. And Carrie McCormick from Cross. and Carrie McCormick from Crosspoint, Sean Kelly from Van Asses Associates who's done the traffic, um, and Stephen Marcano from, uh, from Bowler. Um, I believe thirty-six talks about a, um, traffic monitoring program. Um, and I'd like to, if I could, um, have Sean just address, uh, the concern where the condition is written and the concern for the, um, two-year lookback or a two-year study, um, after the occupancy permit issues.
Well, thanks, Mark. Um, again, good evening, uh, Chairman and members of the board. Again, Sean Kelly with the NASA Associates. Um, so, so first off, with respect to the, the monitoring program, um, you know, typically this is a condition that's required by the state, um, when a project meets certain transportation thresholds that require MEBI review. Um, you know, we don't meet those thresholds. So typically for a project of this type, the state would not require that as part of our highway access permit filing. Uh, beyond that, the, the way the condition is written is, is to do a monitoring program essentially for two years after we get the occupancy permit. Uh, but for much of that time, you know, quite frankly, Route one fourteen and Route one twenty-five, particularly in the vicinity of our site are, are going to be under construction. You know, it's likely there's going to be lane closures, potential detouring. So, you know, the, the, the volumes that we collect are in that time prior to the improvements being, um, completed likely aren't going to be representative of typical conditions either. So I think, you know, given the volumes that we don't meet the threshold that would typically require the monitoring and the fact that the timeframe that is mandated for ultimately be a period where the, the volumes aren't characteristically normal, um, you know, we'd respect the request that, you know, this condition wasn't required.
So I would just say that it doesn't seem like we live in typical times anymore. In typical times, you wouldn't have fifteen cars backed up at a Starbucks waiting for, uh, coffee, cause people would be going in and sitting and things like that.
Sure.
I don't think we're going to have typical one fourteen, especially based on the projects we've been discussing. It all may be different over the next ten years. Um, so respectfully, I don't know that there is ever going to be typical. It may be just different. And that may be something that if we did have this condition, you could just point to and say, hey, these are the numbers, but let's put an asterisk there because of X, Y, and Z. Um, uh, we can see what other people have to say. I'm not particularly sympathetic to that plate.
Right. Well, I mean, quite frankly, the, the, the real goal of these monitoring programs, when they're, when they're done in an effective manner, when the volumes are, you know, at least not construction impacted, is to identify modifications you could make to the signal timing. So, you know, for instance, we would look at one twenty-five and one fourteen and say, based on these volumes, this is the timing that we would recommend to optimize and make things work. Um, DT is going to be doing the same exercise at, at time when the design signals as part of the Route one fourteen corridor. So even if we come up with some, some, you know, suggestive modifications, DT will be doing that same, in some ways it would be redundant. Um, but, but no, I do understand your point.
No, but that's, I mean, that, that's a fair point. I mean, I guess I'm more concerned about what's traffic like getting into the site. Are there backups? Is there queuing? I'd like there to be some sort of monitoring of that. I think you're right. Whatever happens with this site isn't going to affect the, the lights and, and there's not going to be modifications of the traffic signal. So I agree with that. So I don't know if we can maybe narrow it. I, I, my biggest concern about this project is the queuing of the traffic and I have real concerns seeing what else is going on at different locations. Um, what else might be happening on one fourteen? So I have a lot of concerns about that. So I think the biggest way for me to get to okay is to have some sort of review and say, okay, is traffic working within the site and with the queuing or with any lines getting into the parcel?
Understood.
Jean, what do you think? Does, does this, does this condition mean what I'm saying? Does it mean what they're saying? Somewhere in between, or can we refine it?
I think it's somewhere between, and I guess to refine it, you might want to just add language to say, and some type of mitigation could come as a result of the data. So I, what I don't have is that you could request mitigation. And as Jeff, who at the last meeting, there's, there's mitigation that would be required if, if the numbers under AMIBA review and, and the state requirement for the traffic analysis, they, they would impose mitigation. Um, and I would just add that the, I mean, the, the whole traffic study is prefaced on the mass DOT improvements, which as we know, I mean, best cases, maybe you align with them at the time that your construction and occupancy is in place, but likely mass DOT is going to fall behind you. And so, so your numbers, if anything, should come out favorable, I would think, to what we've expected.
We're thinking as well. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. And so I just think having that check and balance in place, and it's not unusual. We've, I, I've discussed with this Mark. I mean, the lately has more taken this course and not just to get the assurance that what they're getting in traffic data, which almost all the time says there will, won't be an impact at all, to get the assurance that that is the case, I think is worth.
I, I think so too. I'd just like to see if we can focus it a little bit more.
Um, on the drive-through lane?
On, yeah, on drive-through and queuing, cause I do, I thought that the traffic study, you know, was pretty clear and, and about, you know, I don't think the numbers of new trips along this road is going to be significantly, uh, changed. Um, but how people, when they get to this intersection and they say, oh, look, Starbucks, let me go in, how that's going to affect everybody else coming and going is important to come back and look at.
Yeah, so. Sorry to interrupt from Crosspoint Associates. So I, you know, I think some of this will work with, uh, with DOT through the process. I think that they're going to, you know, obviously trail us on our, our development. So they're probably, I think they're two, two years out. So, um, we have started working with them on some aligning our design. And, um, you know, I think as we go through the process, they'll be able to see kind of how our traffic um, into the site and, and how it operates and give them an opportunity to kind of coordinate, us to coordinate with them, um, on that design.
I just, I just want to have the ability that if, if things are working out, working out, great, we just leave it and go. If it's not, if there's traffic buildup within the site or getting in, people are trying to take a left and getting stuck, trying to take that left into the site, or there's a backup of cars, um, when they're turning right, every, you know, their ten cars line up in the right-hand lanes. And now people are trying to go around to somehow say, okay, now we need to adjust within the site or increase the drive-through lane or
That's, that's, you know, we will definitely have to work on that as, as, so we're, you know, we own and operate the, the, the shopping center, the plazas. And, you know, that's, that's a, you know, that, we don't want any congestion at the center as well. So, I mean, this, 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 uh, Starbucks in particular is going to have one of the largest drive-throughs in the area, fifteen cars. That's well beyond what they even require typically from, from landlords. So, um, we're providing that plus well beyond, um, the fifteen cars.
I know. It's just, like I said, the one in Haverhill, I go by all the time, backs up. I went Christmas Day, I think, through down, uh, Route one. The one in Saugus was around the block up Route one. Um, so it's just, we're in weird times right now. By the time you guys are building, hopefully it's different. Um, but it's just we're in weird times. So I'd like just more authority to come back and review as needed. That's all.
The problem is you keep going to Starbucks.
I keep driving past it.
Uh, yeah, is it the Starbucks queuing lane that you're, that you're concerned?
Yes, that's, that's to me, oh, that's, for me, that's the, pretty much my only concern with the project. I don't know about other people, but that's pretty much my only concern. The rest I think is, I think all the uses are appropriate. I think the, um, kind of the personal service type aspects, the, the bank, the, um, the rest of the little, the stores in there, that I think those are all really good uses for that area, which is underused.
And some of it is self policing, right? I mean, some of them are just going to drive by, but we've, we've had an incident where we reduced parking for a fast food coffee shop that we were assured was not going to back up until one twenty-five in any circumstance. Week one of opening and it continues to today, backs up until one twenty-five. So it, it's just, it's just the protection that I don't think is overly burdensome, to be honest, and it, it will help inform mass DOT in their, in their progress designs.
Kelly, did you have anything?
Yeah, I would just say, as, as someone who in normal times drive, takes a turn from Andover Street to one twenty-five, right, you know, right where to, right by Starbucks, are excited for that. Um, and gets caught in the traffic and queuing would certainly look forward to kind of having those checkpoints I'm going forward. So if there are any issues, they can get corrected as we go. Cause this is, there's a lot of traffic in this area and it's going to be changing quite a bit.
Okay, so you're ready to monitor, uh, drive-through queue within the first month of Starbucks opening? It's kind of what you're looking to do?
I, I'm not exactly sure the timing. I'll, I'll work, maybe work with Jean on that. To, I, I'd probably give it a little bit longer, cause the first month, it's hot, it's new, it's probably going to be a little bit more than it's three months in. So we'll talk about the timing and we'll try to revise that, um, condition to make it a little more specific to what we are looking to, uh, to do.
Uh, to limit it to Starbucks?
Uh, I mean, I don't see anything else that's going to lead to queuing issues. I don't know that we specifically cite Starbucks. I mean, I think we treat the parcel as a whole, but I don't see anything else in the plans that would have any near the impact in terms of traffic or, um, queuing. I mean, the bank certainly wouldn't. I don't think the other places would either. Not that I can say. Okay, uh, what was the next comment that you wanted us to look at?
About the condition number forty-five. Um, referring to the independent monitor for the construction. And what I did was in condition forty-five, I actually put redline edit what the applicant was proposing.
Jean, what are your thoughts on this?
So I really struggle with this, to be honest, Anton. I am, I would say more than fifty percent supportive of this. I, my recollection of the independent monitor form, um, the basis of that came about well ahead of you. My Matt, Eddie, Matt Eggie was the planner and he was only the planner for a very short period of time. So I don't know what project specifically was the impetus for this type of form. Um, but I will say that the project engineer that I work with throughout this whole approval process, which is pretty significant in terms of correspondence and back and forth and, and providing input and sense of the board type comments, um, designs the, the project. They're fully involved throughout the build-out of the project. They're most aware of the detail and they have to stamp the as-built plan that's being submitted to you, that it was constructed in, in substantial compliance with the plan. And so I know they're working on behalf of the applicant, but in my opinion, they're working on behalf of their stamp as well. And so I think and as you know, there's been many planners in and out, and I only most recently are, are overseeing all the projects, but the watershed-type special permits, when Jack Sullivan provides the engineering, Jack Sullivan is the monitor on that project. I mean, it's a really expensive endeavor. Um, he needs to stay in tune with it and stamp the plans for the as-built. I, but then I will say Amazon, that they came to me with their engineer and I said, no, wait, like, we have some other really good independent ones and I, I wanted that second set of eyes on that type of project, um, to work hand in hand with their engineer. But it came down to scale and visibility of the magnitude of the development. But this particular development, the location of it, the frequency that I'll be near it. Um, I, I'm not opposed to them using their project engineer as the monitor. And I'm not opposed to it being every other week, potentially instead of every week for the development. I, I really struggle with how expensive this effort is on all applicants, to be honest.
Okay, so why don't, why don't why don't you guys work to see if you can come to something that everyone's happy with, um, over the next two weeks? And if not, just kind of we'll take it up with the kind of the two proposals, like give us your final proposal. And Mark, if you guys are comfortable with it, great. If not, we'll just take up whatever the red lines you propose and we'll vote on them.
Okay. Mark, why don't we look at the form itself? I'll, I'll send you the independent monitor form and maybe we can talk about potentially editing that to make it a little bit more
Yeah, if I'm comfortable, we can work it out.
Okay. Like I said, I throw out every other week, I think applicants are proposing once a month for a site visit. Our condition typically is they visit every week, but I get a report monthly. And so again, Mark and I will talk about it and see what we can come to.
Okay.
Hey, John, just a couple of thoughts there if I could.
Yeah, please, Peter.
So I do remember when the board talked about, uh, this independent monitor. I think John, well, John, I know you were on the board then. You go back to the colonial era, right? I mean that in a kind way, John. But you remember, and it was more than the planner. The board engaged on this topic. So, um, I, I, I agree with a lot of what Jean is saying, and I think it probably comes down to scale of the project. And I also agree with Jean that it really doesn't necessarily need to be every week. I guess I'm a little concerned about monthly, but every other week I would certainly be comfortable with that. But I, I mean, I, I clearly remember the board kind of got into this and we had a discussion. Um, I don't know if John remembers anymore, but I'm, I mean, I'm open to see what they come back with. John, did you have any recollection of this independent monitor discussion?
Not, uh, not too much specifically. I mean, um, so I'm, I'm actually, Peter, drawing a little bit of a blank, um, wanted in terms of, uh, the past, well, I mean, it, uh, I don't think we've ever set up independent monitors to be onerous in terms of their overview, you know, do it at the scope that was reasonable.
I would just add, again, the value of the independent monitor at Princeton Properties was tremendous, but that site was just really tough in general. I mean, the topography of the site, the density of the site, the two different owners of the two different parcels being developed, the site work being done by one of them, the proximity, the wetlands, there was just so much that went into that, that the independent monitor has been a huge value and really, really helped this project along with the CONCOM. Um, this site just, it's, it's not proximate to wetlands. It's, it's a pretty standard demolish a couple of buildings and, and build new buildings. So I didn't even condition an environmental monitor, but I did condition that the construction monitor does assist with the SWP plan. So I think each one is, is unique and maybe we can come up with something that's just a little more flexible.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you for that comment. So why don't we take those comments that you wanted us to, uh, that the peer bureau wanted us to look at? We can talk about those and kind of give you some, um, guidance as to how to finish up the draft and then we'll look at the architecture.
There's only one more, Anton. If I think I, but there's one more. So condition number forty-six, and I'll just let Mark speak to this because I'm not sure what the basis of discussion is.
Okay.
Um, actually, I'm sorry. It's condition, uh, forty-seven.
Okay, so that makes more sense, cause forty-six is pretty standard. Okay.
Yeah, forty-six, I couldn't come up with any reason not to like it. Forty-seven, uh, which is
You want a higher bond?
Um, the, the, the real question is whether or not for a site like this, we, we need a bond. Um, I mean, in order to get the occupancy permit, um, the engineer has to make certain certifications. Um, so you'll, my, yeah, my feeling is that, um, you're going to be covered um, in, in a lot of ways by, uh, power by condition sixty.
All right. And then that's typically what we find is that we're conditioned upon, you know, issuing the certificate of occupancy, which is pretty important for us, cause we have tenants that are getting ready to open, obviously put a lot of money into the property. So, you know, if it's, it's hinging on us conforming, uh, to the requirements and required sort of occupancy, that's, that's typically, I particularly on a project like this, that's, that is the kind of the stick that gets us to re-
So I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll go to Colonial John in a second, but I've, in the four years I've been on the board, I've never seen a project like this that didn't have a significant bond. Uh, the only time I've seen us not do bonds is in small, uh, residential projects, like really small, so. I, 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 I don't know of any- I, I, I don't know of any that we've done like this that wouldn't have a bond. John, anything or Peter?
No, that's, that's exactly what I would say, Eton, is we always ask for bonds. It's a standard practice. If we start waiving them, then it becomes, you know, how can we ever argue that we need them? I mean, the whole idea is that if there were a problem on the site, that we would have money to rectify it. So it. You know, I think in the end, it's, it's, it's not an insane amount of money and it's something that'll get done pretty quickly and released pretty quickly.
Yeah, and Eton, I will add that when I kind of suggest the amount of the bond, I try to phrase pretty consistent, that thirty thousand dollars is equivalent to lot A on sixteen hundred Oscar Street, which is a lot of site work for a parking lot, but not tremendous amount of work for a building construction. The Princeton property, each of those sites were forty thousand each for a total of eighty for that entire site. And I just liken it to try to say, what if it just goes south? What if the contractor walks away and we're left with all this debris or mounds of you know, land disturbance that we have to mitigate and, and it's not to cover the project to be built out, but to just get it back into a safe environment if for some reason it just goes south.
Yeah, I, I agree with John and Jean.
Thank you. Okay, so let's leave that for now.
I actually, just one question. Can the, can the release of the bond be tied into complying with condition sixty?
Well, so what we do is you can.
If they have the as-built at that time, Eton, that usually, usually the as-built, as-built is not available at the time of certificate of occupancy. It usually comes after the fact. There's usually a few housekeeping things that have to get done. But if you can meet both those conditions, then I don't see why not. And.
I mean, once you, if you want to come back to us, once you have the CEO and tell us why you should get the bond release, I'm happy to listen, you know?
Okay.
And I've offered in this decision, which I don't typically do, that it could be a surety bond, given the amount. And so most recently, because we've had these huge developments. We can't deny a surety bond and a surety bond is much less obviously than putting up the thirty thousand in cash. So I, I've included that in language.
Okay.
We just, I just, just to make a point on that, I don't know if you can just give it somewhere for the thought is that in this case, we will have an active tenant being Bertucci's there. So we, we, we're going to have to manage the site and obviously control, it, it can't be a full construction site. We're going to have to manage it and have control of construction as well as provide parking and access to customers and, and operation for, for Bertucci. So, you know, to the, to the extent that we're going to, you know, leave an undisturbed site, we're actually, you know, putting a considerable amount of money investing in the property to, to acquire the property, then to start construction, the drawings, obviously all the permitting costs. So, you know, we've got a lot of money invested in this. It'd be hard for us to, I don't know, you know, if the contractor walks away. We have bonds that are in place for, for the contractor and it's on us to, to make sure that the con, the project is in, in good shapes. You know, this isn't our first development, this isn't our first construction project. We've done projects much larger than this. So it's just that we haven't had to do this before, so it's just kind of.
Duly noted. All right, let's go to the comments to address on, from the peer review.
Okay, so the, to call it out for the public, the file name for the peer review comments. I am going to go off of the twenty twelve fifteen T O seven five eight dot one two underscore peer review number two PDF. And so this is our, our comments. The applicant has provided a response to those comments, but I'm going to work off of this document because most of the responses essentially just asking for the relief from the board that could be provided. And so in that document, comment number seven is the first one to address. Comment seven essentially is saying that our minimum drive aisle in the bylaw for one-way traffic is sixteen feet. Two-way aisles, drive aisles within the parcels twenty-five. The bank drive-through at the time of review was nine point one feet. It is now eleven feet for the bank drive-through. They've shown all kinds of circulation plans for large trucks, fire trucks, average cars that can meet any turn needed to get through the drive-through. And so again, the board has some discretion to allow for the eleven-foot drive-through with the bank. And I just wanted you to be aware of that and weigh in as to whether you are amenable.
Okay, so why don't we do it this way? Does anyone have any objections to the width of the bank drive, the bank drive-through aisle? Being eleven feet? And Gene, do you have any issues with that?
I don't. That is typical. I think, given that this development went through a civil review where others maybe didn't get into a traffic and a civil review. We just, it hasn't been highlighted in the past, but it's a typical, it's a typical situation. What I would do is put it as a finding of fact that the board's aware of this and has acknowledged it's appropriate, if that's.
So let's put that in the draft as, as such.
Okay, the next comment is number nine. And so this refers to loading operations. Their truck turning exhibits are included with the response. They show the access to the areas for loading during peak, during off-peak hours for each of the uses on site. Tech is just suggesting that you may want to condition operations to occur during off-peak hours for loading and delivery type trucks. I will say there's been.
The problem is that, that each of these different operations have different peaks.
Yeah.
So if we said to go off-peak for the bank, aren't you going at what may be peak for Starbucks and vice versa? And then for the urgent care, I mean, I'm not sure that that would get you anywhere.
I agree. In the past, when we've conditioned deliveries, it's usually not to, not to impact negatively on the butters and then residential neighborhoods. So we've said you can't come with direct store delivery like bread deliveries before seven AM or, or pick up rubbish before that time, but not necessarily throughout a day. Again, I.
Doesn't seem necessary.
Okay, so that one, it doesn't. We can, again, we can do a finding of fact just to say that you've reviewed it and don't think it's necessary. If, again, if the sense of the board is that.
Yeah, if anyone feels otherwise, that they can contact you and can work on a uh, uh, amending that, but I don't, I don't see that as an issue.
Getting the bank to have off-peak delivery of money.
Right. Well, it, I mean, it's, but even now, I mean, it's it's like the, the deliveries are kind of off the coins. You know, there's all shortages. I mean, it's, it's, it's all strange. So I don't, I don't think we need to micromanage that particular aspect.
Yeah, I mean, the site, it's obvious that there'll be different peaks for different businesses and different deliveries. And I don't, I don't think we could enforce it, to be honest, in the permit.
Right.
All right. So the next one is comment number eleven, and this has been resolved in the latest plan set. There was a minor error in a dimension cited on the plans, but the twelve twenty-one plans before you now are, have addressed it.
Okay, great.
We'll comment number twelve. So this, this gets a little tricky. So our angled parking dimensions are complied with. But what T E C is pointing out that on a sixty-degree angle, when you have an eighteen-foot depth, because the front, so, so just picture the front corner of either the right or left side of the car is reaching the curb stop before the other front corner. And therefore the back corner of either the right or left side is hanging out a little bit into the drive aisle. They've included a sketch plan that is attached to this memo to kind of describe that situation. But the dimension is the dimension. It's what's in our bylaw. I think they're just interpreting it a little different than we have in the past. And I don't think the average-sized car would overhang into the parking lot. In addition, the curb stop, cars pull over the curb stop anyway. So, so there's, you know, an allowance to pull in further than the curb stop, which is what they're measuring from.
And, and Gene, if I could just add to that, this is Steve Madaroff Bowler, the civil engineer for the project. There's, there's a couple of other things in this situation that, that, that make this feel very comfortable at, as drawn at the, at the dimension as drawn. There's a sixteen-foot one-way drive aisle that's only, that only has parking on the one side. So it's not like there's cars on the opposite side of this drive aisle. So that, that makes it more comfortable right there. And then you've got a drive-through lane at twelve feet, which is also very comfortable. So adding two more feet to those parking stalls, as that sketch suggests might fit an eighteen-foot vehicle better. It, it's like an added layer of belts and suspenders here that, that feels unnecessary and better suited to keep the two feet of landscaping. So I think the combination of what you just pointed out of cars can overhang into the landscape area with that curb stop. A generous, you know, drive lane, uh, uh, no nothing on the opposite side. There's a lot of things that, that make me very, made me very comfortable stamping the plan and requesting that waiver based on their interpretation of the measurement. So I, I, as, as the civil engineer is stamping the plan, I'm very comfortable with the dimensions as drawn.
So is the question, do they need a waiver?
I don't think they may need a waiver. I think it's more of an interpretation, their interpretation of, of the dimensions. The bylaws specifically state the eighteen feet and they're meeting the, the dimensions. They're just pointing out, when a car's angled at that sixty-degree angle, that there's potential for it to overhang. Either our bylaw, i- if you want to interpret it that way, then our bylaw should be twenty-foot depth instead of eighteen.
But it's not.
But it's not, exactly. I didn't interpret it the way they interpreted it, to be honest, and they provided the sketch because I just kept questioning what they're trying to just brought.
Okay, so let's just leave that. I don't think we need a waiver.
Okay, comment number thirteen. So, so this kind of describes the Bertucci environment. And as everyone knows, the Bertucci restaurant has been a longstanding restaurant. The parking spaces do not comply with the bylaw. They're, they're being described as compact car parking spaces. And so what T E C had, had suggested is that the applicants should look at an alternative in that rather than requesting. I think right now they've shot twenty spaces to the zoning bylaw, one fifty-nine versus one thirty-nine. And what T E C suggested is look at it as if you made all those spaces compliant. How many spaces would you really need? Is it forty? Is it sixty? Like maybe the planning board would be more apt to say, I'd rather give you a relief on forty because of your varying peaks and uses than to settle for the compact spaces. The compact spaces have been there for many, many years and I, I think, in my opinion, the parking lot's probably a little challenging, but it's an existing condition that's worked. I'll leave that to the board.
Okay, let's just leave that for now and we'll discuss that when we discuss the draft decision.
All right, comment number fourteen is kind of a repeat of that. And so the the accessible, the existing accessible stalls at Bertucci's, including the associated hatched aisles, curb ramps and sidewalks meet the latest version of AA board regulations. Oh, I'm sorry. T E C asked that the applicant provide a review and confirmation that the existing accessible stalls at Bertucci's meet the latest version of AA's board regulations. Their response to see comment thirteen, which essentially is saying they're trying not to impact the operation at Bertucci and to not affect their operations. And T E C's response is that the planning board should determine if existing accessible stalls and ramps should be reconstructed to meet code. In hindsight of all that, what I think an appropriate condition may be is they need to, to deal with the building commissioner on that. He's our ADA.
Yeah.
Regulator. And so we could, given it's this late in the game, condition that that determination needs to be made by the building commissioner.
So is that the ramp at Bertucci's or are there other, the existing ramps?
This is just specific to the existing handicap spaces at Bertucci's.
And, and, and again, Gene, if I could add in here, Steve Madarano Bowler. Those, if you look at Bertucci's as a standalone, the requirement would be to stripe the closest accessibles, the closest spaces to the entrance that have an accessible route. So in that regard, they are compliant. They are the closest spaces that are, and, and that doesn't mean they have all the slope requirements. You know, they're just on a, on a existing facility that you're not redeveloping. It's put the spaces in the best possible spot with an access route to the front door, which is what they are. So it, it depends, there's, there's a, a way to look at that, that, you know, we're trying not to impact the Bertucci's. They've been impacted by the loss of their main entrance being, you know, the Mastio T project takes one of their entrances away. So really just trying to minimize whatever we can impact to them. And looking at that, those spaces are in the right place and they do have an access route to the front door. So, you know, I, I feel when you're looking at Bertucci's as a standalone, they are compliant. Could you do something different by reconstructing the whole entrance of Bertucci's? Possibly, but it's a lot of work. For, you know, for an existing condition that we're trying to maintain as much as possible, so.
Gene, could we do this? Could you reach out to the building commissioner to see if there have been any complaints, issues or anything with ADA having to do with Bertucci's? Seems like if there've been problems, then maybe this is a time to address it. If there haven't been any problems, maybe it's not really necessary as part of this project to address that and it can just be addressed in the normal course.
Yep, and I'll ask them what, what is the requirement? I, they went through a remodel within the last few years. They remodeled their interior and this certainly didn't come as part of that, so.
Yeah, so if you could check in with them and see, just see if there's any suggestions from that and that would be helpful.
Okay. Okay, that was the last one.
Okay, so let's look at the architecture.
Okay, so for the public view, there's a folder called Architecture, and within that, there's a comparison Architecture PDF. And so this PDF, at the last meeting, you saw elevations of both the banks, I'm sorry, the medical care and Starbucks building as well as the Chase Bank. And so this starts out with building A, which is the urgent care and Starbucks. At four nineteen, four thirty-five Andover Street from different views. And then the document progresses on to other convenient MD and Starbucks-type facilities in Taunton, in Winchester. So these are the, these are the current designs that Starbucks is going with. There's one in Framingham. They're all pretty consistent. Newburyport. And in Lawrence. And the elevations are also included, just again, as, just as a reminder of what was shown at the last meeting for both buildings.
Okay, is John still on? And John, any thoughts or comments on that? Because I know you, you had raised that, it kind of is.
I mean, I, it kind of in the end is what it is. I'm, you know, it's their prerogative to, to build whatever they're going to build. I think what we're going to do is, to some degree, that whole area is pretty unruly and it's just going to be a bunch of mediocre, you know, buildings juxtaposed. And I think there's probably not a whole lot we could do about it, but, you know, I'm not sure we're in any kind of position to dictate this. It, I, I don't like they're going to sit well and I think people are going to come by and say, God, how did they ever approve this? But, you know, it's, I'm, I'm not sure there's a lot we can do.
Okay, fair enough. But I think you're probably right. Okay.
Living with them and the developer won't be, but that, you know, that's kind of the problem.
So, Eton, can I just make a quick comment there?
Sure.
And actually, uh, maybe, uh. get a little bit of John's take on this. John, I, I mean, I take your point, so I don't want to belabor it, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, John, but in terms of how it looks, I was out at Kinsman's service station last week getting an inspection sticker, you know where they are on the Andover bypass, just past the intersection with one.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I know exactly. Yeah.
Just as a quick plug, they're excellent.
I'm sitting there waiting, what was that again?
I said, they're, they're great, I love them over there.
Yeah, I, I do too. They are great. So I was sitting there waiting, and I'm looking across one twenty-five from Kinsman's, and there's a building there that's not very old, the address is, I think, one hundred Andover bypass, it's like a three or four-story office building and.
Yeah, the, the one with the MRI?
Yeah, yes, yes. And I just thought to myself, it actually, here I am sitting at Kinsman's, and as I'm looking, I'm thinking, well, maybe this is what John is talking about, because, again, I, I'm not saying that is the look, but I am saying, I mean, I, I think when you look at that, it's, it's, wow, that's, that's a nice job, that's a nice fit. I, I mean, again, I don't want to go on and on about this, but.
Well, no, you're right. We actually spent a lot of time working on the design of that property. I, I think it had a good impact, and if you think of any of the other larger developments we've had up and down one fourteen in recent years, the Eaglewood, CVS, and a lot of the other ones have a consistent look and feel. That, the intersection we're talking about here, that's between them doesn't have that consistent look and feel, I, you know, I, I, I wish it were a little bit different, but it, it, unfortunately, the developer felt a good doubt, maybe I asked the question of why they chose the design that they did. But it's inconsistent with a lot of the larger projects we've done that have nice curves, you know.
Well, I mean, I agree with you, John. I also don't quite know what the options are, but I just, you know, in looking at that building, thought, wow, there's a great example, and I don't know that we're gonna look at this and say the same thing.
Okay. All right, anything else that we need to discuss on this tonight?
Nope, so you would expect that I would have a revised draft decision for the next meeting.
That's what I would, I would love that, Gene.
Okay.
And we're happy not to submit anything else unless you want something, and I'll work with Gene on the draft decision.
Okay. I think it's a holiday the day before, so we just may have to post a day early, but that's all.
Yep.
Okay, continue to January nineteenth, thank you all for the.
Thank you, everybody, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
All right, could we get a motion to approve the December fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by John, all in favor of John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aaron?
We're doing the ayes now, huh?
Aye.
Kate?
Yes.
Oh, now I'm definitely voting aye. All right, approved. All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Peter?
Second.
Seconded by Kate, let's go reverse, Kate, you vote first.
Aye.
Excellent, Peter?
Aye.
Aye, for me as well, Aaron?
Aye.
And John, last aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.